Good morning, it is my pleasure to welcome you. We will now call the meeting to order. Let's have our roll call, please. Any information on the others? If not, we'll proceed. But we are now in the process of trying to wrap up our budget workshops. We recessed and I declare this meeting back open, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, we're back this morning on the fourth day of your budget workshops. And taking the input by you as the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Holder and myself have made some adjustments to the recommended budget for fiscal year 2014-15. And staff is going to pass those out right now. This is going to have three pages for you, and I'll wait until this comes before you to go over it. We had the task of trying to identify additional revenue, squeeze additional revenue, and we'd already squeezed the most we could squeeze prior to coming to you. But in terms of identifying new revenue, you will see before you, on the first page, it's entitled "Board-Directed Revisions: Manager Recommended Budget." The new revenue is I'm proposing to increase the ABC distribution $100,000 from $1.2 million to $1.3 million. In looking at their financials, and as we continue to meet with them on a quarterly basis, we feel that they could handle this additional distribution to Pitt County Government. On the next area on that sheet there, freed-up capacity, we discussed the animal shelter and the actual, the staggered starting date with an effective date of January 1, 2015. As we had discussed, we fully loaded that budget. There's a savings of $191,991 because we're not hiring and going into effect immediately July 1. And I've got a backup sheet to show the information that was your question yesterday on that. In terms of the next two items for the sheriff and detention center, within the Sheriff's Department, the fingerprint station had identified costs of, I believe, $30,000. At the detention center, there were some air control, HVAC equipment identified at $67,000. Since these are both one-time expenses, I'm proposing to use fund balance on those one-two because they are one-time. And that then creates an additional $100,000 within the general fund for reallocation. So the total freed-up capacity that I've identified is $388,991. How this is reallocated, in terms of the discussions we've had with you over the past three days, the far majority of it, I would say, probably within the sheriff and detention center areas. Within the sheriff's office, this would allocate two additional telecommunicators for the sheriff's telecommunications center. Now, that is separate apart from the county's E-911 center here in this building. But that'd be an additional cost of $95,408 within the sheriff's budget. $20,000 additional for overtime within the sheriff's department. An additional $35,000 for ammunition within the sheriff's office. In addition, for building rent for the Stanton Road location that he's looking to move one of his operations to, to be with another, joint with another agency for efficiencies, $10,817. At the detention center, looking at, we're recommending $10,000 requested for the uniforms for inmates. And then within jail health services, an additional $18,092 to meet the projected contractual obligations for the inmate health contract. In terms of the sheriff's office security for the human services center in this building, as you are aware, the Department of Social Services had recommended not having that budgeted within their department so they could utilize those funds for their much-needed staffing needs. I'm proposing to have one deputy, we'd call it a roaming deputy, that would roam between this campus and that campus, not on the same hours, but intermittently at different times. And that we would, from a budget standpoint, put that person in the county manager's office budget. And we will then seek through what we call the indirect cost allocation plan, we would then probably get 50% of that cost back after we expend the monies in the first year. So those monies would come back, half of those funds would come back to the general fund after the first year. And again, it would be one deputy to float between the two campuses. For Pitt Community College, recommending an additional $36,556. This will give them the $150,000 they're identifying they need to open the expansion of the Go-Go Students Center. It does not address the 2% salary increase. By thinking this was within the $150,000 additional increase, let them manage that. Since you're not approving a line item detail to them anyway, let them manage that as they find the best way to do it. And then lastly, to add, right now you have $100,000 recommended for contingency like you always have every year, that is there for needs that come up through the year that are unplanned for. The balance of the dollars left through this redirecting and reallocation of all the resources is a balance of $112,525. I'm recommending that you add that to the existing contingency of $100,000, so you'll have 212,525 at the end of the day if you go with this. And set that aside for a possible reserve for the, for one of two things. One, if through the governor's recommended budget, as it affects the school system, if the schools do have to come back and make a request based upon the 2% or the $1,000 per teacher increase. With Dwayne and I looking at it, we don't think that either of those scenarios is going to hit the general fund budget based upon the 77.1 positions that you pay for out of general fund dollars. But if it does, there'd be a small pot of money there. We don't know what the effect on the school system is. We've reached out to them. They're unsure and they're a little hesitant because it's all just a proposal. If that money is not used for that, then the money could be used for the merit proposal that Vice Chairman Webb brought up yesterday, that to possibly give the employees, instead of the, right now the merit proposal is the continuation of two personal leave days off. This would have an allocation of money that have the choice of those two days or $150. We would propose, once the state budget has settled, then to determine which way that money would be used, not to commit either way right now, but it would be there in reserve. So the total expenditures, $388,991, matches the, either new, the new plus the freed-up capacity on top, again, of the same amount. And a couple of notes on the bottom. We are still recommending the discount rate for early payment on ad-vulgar taxes would be reduced from 2%. And we're recommending to go down to half a percent. We feel half a percent would probably be a better target. And that would be, again, in fiscal year 2015-2016, which is actually not the year we're getting ready to enter into, but the following year. Again, as you recall, we would have had to have let the Department of Revenue know by April 30th, the board's intentions to reduce that. So if you do that now, it would, could not be effective until the July 1 of 2015.
If I can add, Scott, that reduction from 2% to one-half percent would equate to some $600,000 impact on the general fund.
Note number two, we are recommending that the fed inmate bed count remain at the 65 beds per day, and that yields $78 a day times 365 days a year. We just believe and feel that the current dip in the number of feds is not reflective of an overall year's worth of history on it. And we're willing to try to work with sheriff and have him work with his contacts with the, on the federal level to maintain that 65 beds. We have dropped it from 70 in the current fiscal year, down to 65. He was recommending taking it down to 60. That's about a $284,000 hit in terms of lost revenues if we take it down another five beds. In terms of number three, I think I hit on the fingerprint station, air controllers. Again, that would come from fund balance. Once we identify where we are, June 30th, at the end of the year, that is a, sufficient funds are in there. And then number four, same thing for number four with PCC. They had about $275,000 in facility repairs. I'm not recommending that all $275,000 be considered at year-end within fund balance, but maybe select projects, a boiler, a chiller, some of the more major projects. Behind that are two sheets, both dealing with animal control. The first one shows the freed-up capacity, where we came to the $191,991, where we saved dollars through the delayed starting of the program with animal control officers for beginning in October this year, and then some of the staff not even beginning until the following fiscal year. Dwayne, you want to make any, add any comments to that?
This is pretty much in direct response, Commissioner Cole, to your concerns expressed yesterday, to ensure that while we are freeing up capacity, we wanted to show you the timeline of implementation and activities.
And I've read it, and I agree with it. I think it's...
Hey, the third page is just a further breakout of per position, showing the original budgeted dollars, the revised budgeted dollars, what the savings were, and then what the delayed dates would be for that program. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that is what we have brought to you this morning. We hope this is following some of the collective consensus or input of the board on what you desired to see changed in the budget. And based upon the resources we have and not recommending a tax increase, we trust and hope this delivers to you, hopefully, the majority of what you wanted to see.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does any questions from the board?
I'd like to say this. I appreciate it very much. I like it. You did a good job. I thank you. I feel like the, we need for the animal shelter, we need to make plans. Where are these workers going to go organize this stuff? And you're not going to do it overnight. Their job prescription is going to have to be clearly wrote for them. And I think that's going to be a big responsibility. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. I support it 100%.
Everybody who wants to speak, we're coming around. Tom?
No, I'm happy with this.
Beth?
Will you explain again the, what you were planning for PCC as far as the chillers and the boiler, or one or part of all of that? I was trying to follow, but...
Sure. We had projected that, based upon the current fund balance, projection we have for June 30th, we're looking at 18 point, help me here, Dwayne, 18.92 is what we project that we're going to land on June 30th as we end the current fiscal year, for fiscal year 2013 and 2014. If that's the case, we're saying that we want to remain within the policy range of 18 to 20% as a fund balance that you've stated as a goal. And that being the case, we feel that we could appropriate some fund balance to meet a few of their capital needs. Again, I don't think 100% their capital needs, but more, some of the more dire ones. And still remain well above an 18% fund balance.
But we won't make that decision until April, July 1.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. And thank you for the job you've done.
Glenn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just encourage us, and I hope we will do it, for that reserve of the 112 to be for the merit proposal, so that we can help our employees out. They've done a good job and gotten above standard over the last year. As far as, my one question about Pitt Community College is 275. My problem with it is this, that they've pushed and they campaigned and they advertised and spent a lot of money to get a bond passed. It's going to be a 20-year tax increase on the citizens of the county in a year where only about 10% of the total population even voted. And that's to build more buildings that we're going to have to maintain on, out of the county budget and dollar to allocate to them. And I just have a problem allocating all this money on top of the tax increase or getting to build more buildings, again, that we have to staff as far as the maintenance, that we have to deal with the energy savings companies that we have to fund and maintain. And I think some of that money could be diverted to public schools for what may happen in Raleigh with the teacher pay increases that we're going to have to cover. I just think it's a lot to ask after getting $22 million to come back after you gave what I thought was a fair budget presentation for them, or budget proposal for them, to ask for even more. Again, these are our buildings that we maintain. And I just can't say enough, 20-year tax increase. And then I just feel like we're getting caught on all sides from, because a lot of money was spent to advertise for that bond and to push that bond. And that could have went to a new chiller. And it was obviously a need that they knew was there. My only question about the animal control part is how are we going to enforce the dog licensing?
Our proposal...
Is it going to be an honor system, or...
Well, our proposal is as dog owners get their rabies shots for their dogs, we had a, I think, a three-pronged approach. One would be that if a vet was willing to participate and have a kiosk in their vet practice, they could pay there at the same time that they're paying to have the shots done for rabies. If not, then the shot records are given to the animal shelter, I believe on a monthly basis.
By law.
We were talking about proposing to invoice or bill off of the shot records directly to the dog owner. And the third option...
Online.
Online ability to, from, you know, your own computer, to just go on and pay online, you know, from a computer access.
And with this, my only objection to it is, is this just punishes the people that obey the rules. I would rather have big fines for people that don't versus those that do. I mean, like I gave the example, and it's an extreme example, but my mother's dog that, when I was over there for Mother's Day, was on the couch sleeping the entire, he ain't worth $10. But, you know, for however long he survives, that's going to be $10 a year.
Better watch how you talk.
He's worth $10 to your mama.
Sure, of course he is. And he's a good addition to the family. But I mean, $10 for him to sleep on the couch when he's not going to, he's not, I mean, if you bit anybody, his teeth would fall out. He's just really old. And so just the $10 to register him every year for something he's not going to do, that's the only part of it that really bothers me and people with indoor dogs in general, that took the steps to make sure their yard is fenced in well. I mean, because their yard's fenced in, so when they turn him out, out back, there's no way for him to get out. I mean, he's not going to be able to dig or whatever. But I just want to make sure that we, that we're not getting the people that obey the rules and that we're getting the people who don't.
Your alternative to this would be, within the general fund, to use general fund dollars rather than the license fee, that we really feel the license is a fair, is a fair fee. And keep in mind that as we projected those revenues, Dwayne will pull that up here, for the first year, the revenues, I think it's speculous page right here.
$166,000.
Right. And that's just unincorporated Pitt County. So that's for fiscal year 14-15. In year two, it's projected at $331,000 because we are hoping, anticipating, as, once the budget is adopted, that we as staff will go to the municipalities, encourage them through inter-local agreement to allow that this licensing be administered and enforced within the municipalities to help support the shelter operations, particularly the capital investment of the shelter that they are bringing their dogs into as well as the county. And if not, then we were talking about that we may need to look at an alternate, alternative arrangement for the municipalities to handle their animals.
And does this include hunting dogs?
The fee does include hunting dogs, but as a special...
Under the specialty, the specialty license.
I couldn't remember that part. And again, my concern is that we're charging people who obey the rules. And are there fines on the back end for those who don't?
Yes, actually, Janice has...
We're working on that still from yesterday.
Has revised the county control ordinance to add the criminal penalties. Do you want to highlight that?
Yeah, we made, I proposed three changes that I shared with Scott yesterday as a result of the consensus of the board. One was to make explicit the criminal penalties. They were in there, and we highlighted that. The second thing was to add a whereas paragraph in the beginning. That puts people on notice that they do have the right to reasonably protect their person and property from any dangerous animal. And then we added a section, before the prohibition for dogs running at large, we made an explicit statement that clarified that every dog shall have an owner responsible for its care and control. And then the ordinance defines owner as well. So we highlighted those three things based upon yesterday's conversation. But to answer your question, yes, it does include civil penalties for those who violate, and it also now makes explicit that there are criminal consequences associated with that as well.
And just my last little thing is that, you know, we just all need to remember that $10 isn't much, especially, and you should have your dog spayed or neutered if you're not going to breed it. But just remember that every government program never decreases in cost. So when, you know, several years down the road, as costs go up, whether, because salaries are going to increase, everything increases. I mean, we've seen that. That's why we're always working so hard to squeeze everything in, that in 10, 15 years, it's going to cost you 40, 50 bucks a year to own a dog, one dog.
May I say this?
And that's all I have. You, go ahead, Mr. James.
Your dog ordinance is supposed to cover exactly what our manager was suggesting yesterday, to take and to put some teeth into it to make sure that it is enforced. And all of these things, and the ordinance is made to be amended. So these things that you're not doing now, you have an opportunity to come back and to correct them or to add to them to make it work successful. So keep that in mind. All of this that was suggested, that should be covered in that ordinance that we pass or it should be able to amend to make sure that we have them in there. Don't forget that. I won't be around...
Mr. Chairman, can I just say one thing about, I don't see...
I want to come on around if we can.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to speak to that comment.
But then we'll come back to that. But I do, in addition to that, I want to respond to Glenn.
Okay, I got you.
Pay the $10, Glenn, and be quiet on your mama. After that, it does, I think the manager is doing exactly what most of us had advocated. That is to go with a user fee concept. And that's what that ordinance is all about. If you enjoy something, you have to pay for it. One thing further about, and I have in my mind, Glenn, questioned the funds to Pitt Community about this, but I cannot argue with maintenance fees. Now, when you've got buildings and places that need to be maintained and kept up, maybe it should have come from another fund there, but it's still beholden to us as commissioners to keep our buildings maintained. Now, Dr. Johnson, before you got here, we decided we'd go this way for the first round and then come back. You are next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm particularly concerned that we not have unruly dogs or unruly owners. And the best way to do that is to have some sort of controls or understandings so that we can not just stop dog bites, but control our animals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You finished, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, he's told you.
All right, Mr. McLaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, first of all, thank Scott and Dwayne for such an outstanding job in terms of this budget revision. I think this is an excellent budget. I'm particularly interested in the animal control. We see where this is going to be implemented as stated, and funding... satisfies my concern in that everybody, all departments are somehow getting an increase. It might not be getting exactly what they want, but they're getting something. So I'm very pleased with the way the budget was presented. I want to thank both of you for a job well done, and your staff. Thank you.
Mr. Gage?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I also would like to express my appreciation to Dwayne and Scott and their staffs for an outstanding job you've done in pulling together this budget. I think that what you presented this morning is exactly what we primarily instructed you to do, and I am very pleased with what you have presented. The two key issues that I had was, number one, I thought that we've got to do something with animal control. I felt like trying to do it all at one time was biting off more than we could probably manage. So I think this phased-in approach is more realistic. The other concern I had was to make sure that we looked to see if we could fund the sheriff's request more. And this presentation does that. It gives him some leverage in most of those areas that he had shortcomings in. So I am very pleased, and I think you have done an excellent job, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, do you, do you feel we tried to come back to the agreement somewhat that we told you to present to us?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I've got one more question for the sheriff. Federal prison, we set up for 65 or whatever. We're down to what now?
Right now, our camp's down to about 46, but we know we're on a low right now, but we anticipate being...
How long has it been on the low? That's just my question.
A month.
A month, all right. When it gets on the low, do you have the prerogative to transfer some of your people working over in that area to the others that might go into your overtime a little bit for some people?
No, generally, they're in our general population as well. They're actually, they're intermingued with the other prisoners as well. They're not just house...
So where you need, where you got 40 or 80, are you going, you have to have same number of people there?
Same light bill, same number of people.
I know the light bill is, but I'm talking about employees.
Yes, sir. Still have to have the same number of employees.
I debated that a little bit, but that's beside the point. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Beth, you wanted to come back?
Well, I just wanted to say, and I know it's already been said, that I just think that the animal control ordinance or projected process for Pitt County has been long overdue. And I do not see a $10 fee or anything else as punishment. I see it as what is required to have a dog here. And yes, everything goes up. You're right, that has to do with government, it seems like. I mean, just look at the order in the sewer and the garbage pickup fees that we have to pay to have some, you know, who would get a salary proceed on with that job. And you have to pay for other licenses and fees. And I just think this is a small amount. And I don't want the ordinance to start out looking as if it's a punishment for not doing what you're supposed to do, but a directive as to what animal owners are expected to do if they're going to own an animal in this county. Now, I'm not to say that we should not enforce things that come along that allows us to do that within the ordinance. But right now, we can't do any of what I just said. So this has certainly given us a good framework. And I'm very proud of what you all have done with looking at implementing the ordinance and the requirements for future employees and that sort of thing for the animal control. I'm very excited that we've looked at that as, you know, moving forward. This is a big step for us, but I'm proud that we're taking smaller steps in implementation. Thank you for the job you've done.
All right, now, if we want to go around again, Mr. James.
Let's let me say two things.
One.
Number one, I support it 100%. I think he's done a wonderful job. But number two is, the big job is ahead of you. That's on June the 2nd. You're having a public hearing on the dog ordinance. And that dog ordinance is...
June 3rd.
June the 3rd. I thought it was 2nd. But anyway, that dog ordinance is going to be important. Believe me, it is. And it's going to be a challenge, and you've got to take and work it right. That's going to depend on what happens in dog control and making sure that their owner, Mr. Chairman, as you said before, the owner is responsible for that dog. And the only way you're going to have ownership is to know who that dog belongs to. So you keep that in mind. That's all I have to say. But I'm proud of, Mr. Manager, your staff and all of your people, what you have done. You've done exactly, I feel like, like we instructed you to do. And thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Allen, will you step here? Mr. Allen, will you step here a minute, please? To kind of follow up on that a little, piggyback a little bit, but you know, the ordinance, to me, is not a revenue source thing, it's a user fee thing, but the totality of it is safety, and that's what we, what I have tried to hit on, and I think that this board has done that, so. And it will be a long process, and it will be, if things were to play as the utopia that we live in sometimes, we would hope that this ordinance is going to alleviate these problems, and therefore, some of the, maybe wishing again, but maybe some of the cost of it will diminish some, is my feeling, is the way I'd like for it to be. Is there anything else to the pleasure of the board, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just, I just want to make just a general comment on the animal control and where the county has been and where it's going. Animal control has been, especially Canine Control, has been a topic that's been discussed for years, and obviously has been presented over the past six or eight months. The topic has came before the board in terms of different ordinances and proposals, and most of them until the, probably the first year have stalled, but really just wanted to, I guess, acknowledge that what has occurred in the last six months has really been a collaboration. And to me, it's been a collaboration of four different parties in terms, or groups. To me, it's like a four-legged stool, and one being U.S. Board, second being the Animal Control Advisory Board, third being Michelle Whaley and her staff, and fourth being the community input, the citizens and groups and Ms. Sanchez. I think without all four of these elements coming together, that we wouldn't be where we are today. I don't think one, one group can claim 100% responsibility or credit, but I think it's truly a collaboration of all four groups.
Any further comments from the board? If not, do have a motion.
I'll move adjourn now.
I second it.
It's time to adjourn.
Any discussion? Sure, no discussion, you just.
No discussion on the motion to a man, adjourn.
Don't encourage him.
Wait a minute, no, you're out of order if you do it.
Thank you all for coming, and appreciate everybody's input and to bring this matter to where it is today.